Well, it's very boring, isn't it? Because the outgoing council decided to call the meeting before the election period starts, this being the end of the four-year, two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three, four-year cycle, the report covers just ten months. It feels like a lot more than ten months. For background, I'm going to repeat a line or two from my first reporter's chair two years ago. 'From the time the Vikings sailed down the River Sore, Cagathers been welcoming east-winders, like me, and adapting to change.' I spoke then of us being canny, enterprising, fiercely caring for one another, and making the most of life on a natural crossroads. Communications, I use subheadings just to try and keep you away, but it doesn't always work. Communications. We keep every household and business updated via the quarterly newsletter. Our draft minutes and agendas continue to be available on the website and more. We hope more people will keep up to date that way, looking at the website, and would be pleased to have a full house for monthly parish council meetings, as indeed we did last week. People. Donna Gregzar-Clark completed her certificate in local council administration in record time, and with flying colours, well done. We need a minimum of seven councillors nominated and elected. It's always called elected, whether you have an election or not. You only have an election if there's too many. We need a minimum of seven nominated and elected to retain something called general power of competence. It means you're a rubbish councillor if you haven't got it, and hope we will achieve the seven. Women are currently underrepresented on the parish council as our residents living to the south of London and Derby Roads, which is an official boundary. The age profile is improving slowly, but diversity in general could still be improved. For more about being a councillor, nominations for the new council, please talk to Donna afterwards. I'm indebted to councillors Gat, Hawkesworth, Priestley, Sewell and Williams for seeing the whole year through with me. I'm pleased to report that the parish council continues to have better retention and stability. With the number of councillors completing each of the four years of the cycle, from two thousand and nineteen, year by year, being five in the first year stood the year out, then only two in the following year, and then four last year, and now six this year have stayed the whole year through. Special thanks to Martin Hawkesworth and Carol Sewell, who happen to be close to me here, for your contribution and long service, not just over this year, but over a long whole period of this four-year period and more. And the village is very indebted to you both. Thank you. Routine council work. This year, the new Human Resource Committee became established with Hillary Williams as chair. Donna's strong administrative experience has enabled us to put both policy and practice on a sound footing, but there is more to catch upon yet. Getting a bank account at last, where dual online bank payment authorisation is routine and affordable, may not sound glamorous, the boring stuff we do, any more than great audit reports and renewing the office roof, it's flat, but is essential for a professional and accountable organisation like a parish council. We are indebted to our lengthsman, there's a lovely old-fashioned title for you, lengthsman. Don't see many of them advertised. We are indebted to our lengthsman Stuart Cox for his work on behalf of the council on all our sites and beyond. The Sidely Park volunteers, led by Jan Barrowcliff, add a dimension in the park, and more widely, that the parish council itself could never provide. Thank you. They've got any representatives here today except me, anyway. They have modestly declined the, I'm going to keep saying N W L D C, North West Leicestershire District Council, please forgive me. The volunteers have modestly declined the N W L D C suggestion that we might have a good chance of a national green flag award for Sidely Park. You can get involved, if you want, at the park, by giving your details to Donna. Likewise, the sterling work of Kegworth litter pickers continues every day, and especially through weekend litter picks organised by Kegworth Plan Group and One Kegworth. And thanks, you all, again, to those who take part in those and to Julie and Karen, who keep those going. We are very grateful to our tenants at the King George V playing field in the shape of the football, tennis and cricket clubs. We need more space placed, this is still, camp's routine work, of course. We need more space for sport and fitness in Kegworth. We continue to do what we can to get and give the best sport we can to the clubs, in spite of the complex history and tenure of the field. The low priority that it appears, well, I know, it's a fact of life, that N W L D C and L C C is the county, Leicestershire County Council, have been able to give to the sport and fitness agenda in what they've done as the northern parishes. Council of Nottingham might be saying the same, I'm not sure. And the continuing H S two planning blight doesn't help either, because if you didn't know, football pitches were supposed to be part of the land by the motorway. Volatility in public life, not least post-Covid, and with soaring inflation makes budget setting tricky. I see that my own council tax bill shows a 4.5% increase overall, but the parish council element is only 0.1% on my bill. A slight upturn this year in the number of eligible domestic properties helped us to keep the pre-set increase near zero. There is a lot of interest in the number of properties in Kegworth exempt from council tax, including houses of multiple occupation. They're not the only ones, houses of multiple occupation. If it's been empty for so long and so on and so forth, there's quite a lot to it. It's complicated. We are working with N W L D C to establish the facts and whether Kegworth is an outlier in the whole district. I haven't put in here that we might be pleading, and pleading if it is, but there's a long way to go, and I know previous parish councillors have looked at this. It's not the first time. Planning applications are a standing item for comment only at a parish council meeting. Decisions in line with planning policy and the local plan for North West Leicestershire lie with the district, and we don't make the decisions, all we do is comment. All H M O proposals now come as planning applications to this council and to the planning department, thanks to Article Four. There were some that didn't even have to go anywhere before Article Four. And all it means is, they actually come to us. Everybody gets the chance to comment on every H M O application. And they're frequently opposed by us on the grounds of parking and highways, but they still end up being agreed at district based on planning law and with no significant interventions that we can see from county highways. Sorry to say that, but I think parish councillor colleagues view it a fact, as far as we can see. Community and events, chance to wake up again. Within our limited resources, we continue in an enabling role for the community and events. We regret the low budget allocations to grants in recent years. It's not uncommon amongst councils, given the financial weather since two thousand and twenty. We gave grants to the Bowls Club and Kegworth Plan Group, and we've committed to supporting One Kegworth financially for the two thousand and twenty-three Christmas market. The Christmas market being a great advert for the village of Kegworth and puts the place on the map in places it wouldn't otherwise be. We organised the annual Kegworth Air Disaster Memorial, which was well-attended, and worked with the Royal British Legion and its partners as legal and risk management backstop, and I think Donna is owed again a big accolade for this. So acting as the backstop, we allowed the traditional remembrance parade and ceremony to take place for the first time since Covid. In a particularly unpredictable civic year, we ran a shop window competition for Queen Elizabeth II's Platinum Jubilee. Sadly, we found ourselves organising ten days of official mourning for her death soon afterwards. We're grateful for the support we received from volunteers to staff this office and to those who called in to bring flowers and sign the book of condolence. We think we've begun to use this space in a versatile way, and it serves quite well. That was a sad occasion, but it worked well. Coronation Weekend is to come, but unfortunately, it's straight after local elections. I will not make any more comments on that, it's just a fact. And that's not just this local election, it's parish and district elections across the country. We welcomed one of the local area coordinators, sorry, we welcomed a new local area coordinator, a new post funded by L C C, County Public Health, and she's tasked to match individual personal needs, particularly vulnerable people, but not only, and we're all vulnerable in different ways, to match those needs with voluntary groups in the village. And we worked with her to coordinate and advertise the several warm welcome spaces which exist in Kegworth, including the library and the Baptist Church and St Andrews, but there are others. And with that in mind, and our plan to see stretherly increasing footfall into this office, and thank goodness we've got lots of people here tonight. So in order to do our bit and see that increasing footfall, we signed up for something called the Great Winter Get Together. You may not have heard of it, Google it afterwards, and saw nearly twenty different people on two occasions for each of our events, and they were all aimed, well, that event is aimed at combating the post-Christmas blues. And we worked, because we had a Tuesday afternoon cake and curry event, some people here were there, and a Saturday morning village walk, followed by refreshments. Both saw valuable networking, and the lemon curd cake and other donated goodies survived right through both. Projects. Historic civic parish responsibility for St Andrews Churchyard could be regarded as routine, but in recent years, it has become a high-profile, multifaceted, you might say almost problem project for this parish council. Not particularly cheap either. A demanding privilege, you might say, but it is iconic for Kegworth, we have to say. You know, the church and the churchyard are iconic, and not only for the village, but its beauty and its history. The new LED lighting still needs tweaking, but it's good to see the light over the front gate working. These are the things of which village life is made, but somebody has to do them. We caught up with recommended tree maintenance there in the churchyard dating back to before lockdown, and we hope that the Nottingham Road wall maintenance will go ahead soon. And apologies now for the delay, and also for the further traffic management issues, the changes there will be, but hopefully they will last for a few weeks and not for months and months. How about your date for that starting, Donna?
It's in a few weeks, I can't remember.
No, I can't either, but it's not long, is it? Not long, okay. After a very long delay, design and implementation for the Kegworth Public Realm project is now in the hands of the county council. The designation of marketplace from the county council highways team legally is now highway not maintainable at public expense. A year ago, we published the plan showing the co-op entrance reopened one way in and the loss of the herringbone parking bays. In spite of the current austerity, the funders have approved a last-chance saloon reprieve for the money. We aim to share more detail by the early summer. And the other bit, smaller bit, the London Road improvements for cyclists and pedestrians have continued to be hamstrung by the problem, and some people have read about it dozens of times, the underlying Derwent aqueduct that runs all the way past here, under the road in Kegworth, and through to Loughborough and Leicester's water supply, and we'll be tired if it gets breached. Somebody has a very big bill, we had a figure for that, I can't remember what it was. Few millions. So on that improvements to pedestrian routes and cycleways, we've listened to resident feedbacks, we've developed a bit of consultation, and a compromise solution that does something rather than nothing is likely, but it's all taking time, so it looks as though nothing at all has been happening in public realm. But it has to happen very quickly now, very quickly indeed. And I think there are many in the village, you just want to see, see us move on, really. But that's, you know, that's not to say there won't be some chance to see things, if it's not being done in a corner. Consultations, liaison and campaigns. I'll repeat that, consultations, liaison and campaigns. And I put here in that order of priority, consultations, liaison and campaigns. Always good to talk. Parish and town councils can be sleepy and do the minimum. Kegworth faces more issues than most, not least because of its location. In recent years, we have tried to leave no stone unturned and to punch above our weight. Wouldn't always be recognised, but I think it's true. We are very fortunate to have a clerk who understands, tolerates and copes with this approach. We can only survive because of the unsung, skilled and perceptive support of longer-term and newer residents, who make their own thought-out and carefully argued contributions. And sometimes they send emails, sometimes they write letters, sometimes they lobby various important people, but they often share them with us, and that helps us, helps us a great deal. And I don't think we'd be able to do what we do without that. Our work goes well above the expectations of most English parish and town councillors who put themselves forward for public office. It's the third tier, if you weren't here last week, you know, county, district, parish. In fact, there are areas of the country where you don't have these three tiers. So we're very much the bottom rung of democracy. And some people expect an awful lot of the average parish or town councillor. No different, incidentally, to Ashby Town Council than it is in Kegworth Parish Council. Just, whatever. We have variously been at the table, or for, or commented officially on all of the following. And we're going to give you a long list, often in great depth we've done those things, at great expense of time and effort and letter writing and thinking and researching. I put here sometimes at cost to additional time, emails and attendance at meetings, online and face-to-face. And I end with this list, these are the things I think we've been involved in this year, in ten months. In no particular order, by the way. One, Rushcliffe Borough's Ratcliffe-on-Saw Power Station Site Local Development Order. Two, the Airport Future airspace programme, which will reach a public consultation phase in the next six to twelve months. That's about, part of a national thing, it's about the exact route that the plane will take. We're more interested in takeoff, you can't do much about landings because they're soft landings, and it's a long soft landing, and you can't change the route very much. But at takeoff, instrumentation now allows the plane to actually do its thing. And so if we've got planes taking a little bit more of a kink south of Kegworth, it might produce an improvement, it's that sort of discussion. By the time it goes public, it may actually, there may be no choices much, because you know how these things sometimes work, if you've seen these things a lot, but that's something we've been involved in, future airspace. Thirdly, the Lockington-Hemington Draft Neighbourhood Plan. The newly-elected parish council after May will need to decide whether the demands of producing such a neighbourhood plan for Kegworth would bring any planning assurance and protection in proportion to the demands and cost of the process to produce them, because it's a very professional document, you have to have consultants and so on. There is money you can get, and there's advice you can get, and it's time-consuming. Maybe Kegworth should have had a neighbourhood plan before now, but there's all a debate about whether they really carry any weight when it comes to planning decisions, because the local plan of North West Leicestershire, in many ways, takes a higher priority. But we commented on Lockington-Hemington's finished, nearly finished plan. Number four, the new emerging North West Leicestershire local plan, and that will inform local commercial and residential development in the rest of the decade. Working in partnership on that, on our comments with four other parish councils in Leicestershire in the neighbourhood, you can guess what the four might be. And those are councillors surrounding the Freeport site. The Freeport, of course, includes the airport, Segrove and Ratcliffe-on-Saw Power Station site, although that's in Nottinghamshire. We haven't worked on that with Nottinghamshire councils, because that wouldn't be appropriate. There's too much of a local plan for North West Leicestershire here. Strategic cycling and walking infrastructure documents from N W L D C and more, others as well. I've seen a few cycling and walking documents enough to sink a ship. Here I put in my only personal note, which is I have a personal passion to reopen the direct Kegworth-north-to-Lockington route, which should never have been lost, in my opinion, at an earlier stage. And I don't mean taking your life into your hands and trying to get across the A fifty dual carriageway either. Somebody should have done something about it, and at the time, it was thought of. Worth putting it in, because it's going to be, you may say we hang off on one, but it's actually, you know, when you type routes to work to encourage recycling and not walk, and there's a direct link with Ratcliffe on the maps as well, you know, it's cross-boundary, so it's underlying big issues. Number six, car cruising on the A four-five-three. No further comment. Seven, the future bus services serving Kegworth, Sutton Bonnington and the station, particularly Skylink. The cross-boundary and Freeport links made with Nottinghamshire County Council could only help this council in the future. Throughout, we have seemed to be entirely in the hands of Nottinghamshire Local Transport Authority with its enhanced bus partnership and active bus service improvement plan, and we hope for a good outcome for the six hundred-plus petitioners. Keep some hour out of area in the end, you try controlling a petition, especially when the student union at Sutton Bonnington get hold of it. A lot of them are very genuine and grateful to all of you to sign the petition of Skylink. Number eight, Percyman Homes and Historically Unresolved Matters on the Pritchard Drive Development. No further comment. Number nine, supporting residents as far as possible, for example boarded-up properties and noise associated with the railhead on the Segrove site. And number ten, most recently, you'll be pleased to know I'm finishing, number ten, the use of U Lodge as asylum seeker hotel. So that's my report to you, and you can raise things afterwards, but I don't think we do questions on that now, do we? We do now? No, later, later, that's right, yeah. So we now turn to reports from our councillors. I think our county councillor is not here, and has not sent us anything or sent any apologies. So we turn to our district councillors, and I think they've tossed a coin to see who goes first. So councillor Carol Sewell.
Hi, everyone, I must apologise more because I've got a dreadful cold and I can't speak very loud, sorry. I'm your district councillor for Daleyker Hill, if you live in Kegworth. If you live in Lockington and Hemington, it's Dalaga Hill, I'm told. I'm reliably informed, but nobody knows what I'm talking about at council if I'm saying that. It covers the northern side of the A six, so Kegworth this side of the A six, Lockington, Hemington and Sawley Marina. There's been some changes at North West in this last year. We have a new GPAC executive now, who is Alison Thomas. She's proven to be very supportive to councillors and to the parishes, I'm sure thirty-one support that. We've had changes in the premises at North West. The customer service centre has moved. If you've had the delight of receiving your tax bill today, you will see that the customer service centre now operates out of the town centre premises. Stenson House, which is the old council building, will remain for council meetings. This past year, I have liaised with the community focus officer on some matters in the ward. Some of these are to help reinstate the Kegworth Playgroup discussions with the Long Mottam Playgroup, which has lost its premises, and has now seen that group relocated to Kegworth Village Hall and is successfully operating. The health and wellbeing team have worked with me to start a yoga class in the village. This is a place on Tuesdays, and the Baptist Church is proven very popular. So if you feel like a bit of exercise, a bit of stretching and touching your toes and touching your nerves with your knee, please come along, five P M on Tuesday evenings. The environmental protection has worked with the police to crack down on illegal motorbikes along the lanes of Netherfield, Ratcliffe and Long Lane. And community safety have provided support regarding anti-circum behaviour at the Sidely Park. The empty premises office continues to work towards research in these empty properties and looking for a solution. The district has provided grants for various groups in the village, the Guides, the Plan Group, the parish council for the Jubilee celebrations, the library and the Baptist Church, who received warm space grants. There's currently a two hundred and fifty grand available for groups and parish councils for the coronation event. I encourage the parish council to sign up for the Great Winter Get Together, which Ray mentioned. It's part of the Joe Cox Foundation, supporting the legacy of Joes to help combat loneliness and encourage community interaction. And our two events went really well, yeah. We had a lovely walk in the freezing cold weather, worried about people slipping over, but we all got back in peace to enjoy seeing cakes here afterwards. Being one of the opposition councillors at the district and greatly outnumbered is a challenge. Our party continues to bring forward motions at council and then to have the council to account of scrutiny committees if we feel that it is necessary. I have to mention this emotive subject. At full council, on the twenty-third of February, I responded to the council leader's statement referring to housing of the asylum seekers in Kegworth. I pointed out that village residents were justifiably concerned about this matter, and there had been no prior consultation to prepare villagers or the parish council. I asked that as the council leaders have the ear of the Home Office, would they put forward the concerns that we have in the village regarding the numbers, the lack of amenities and pressure on the already struggling doctors' surgery. I've since heard that medical matters will be dealt with away from Kegworth, so that's a start and it should help. I also mentioned that a lot of local residents have lost their gym, because there is one at the U Lodge, and there's very little leisure provision provided in the village of this type. As always, also the concerns over the job losses. And I asked for clarity surrounding the planning change of use question, but I'm yet to have a response to this. I also wrote to our independent MP, Andrew Bridgen. I received a reply, but I've seen from Facebook and other things that my reply wasn't as detailed as other people's. I don't know why. My shadow portfolio on employment regeneration and infrastructure fits in with the Freeport and Devco, which has been brought into this area. The latest on these is out in the public realm, and I've been keeping tabs on any developments. I've also been discussing with the Economic Development and Regeneration Team Manager that we might secure more funding to keep the Blue Skylink bus operating, something which Ray is very passionate about and been working very hard on. Of course, buses are more of a county council issue, and I think we'll be working with Notts and, yeah. The manager said they have a place at the table, and he will try and influence some funding if he can. We'll just have to wait and see how that pans out. I've worked on many planning matters with individuals and parish councils. I was devastated to hear that the big warehouse development just north of Hemington, which was refused by the council, which took up very many hours of mine and other councillors and the parish council, it was turned down but was appealed, and now it's going ahead. So more warehouses, folks, that's just what we need. Recycling and refuse collections, well, they take up time, whether they be uncollected or recycling running around in strong winds, and which containers would be the most effective for collections. I do my best to sort these out. The recycling containers is an ongoing issue, as various trolleys are still being trialled, as is waste food collection across the region. Various housing matters, repairs, rent, finding accommodation, amongst other things. The lack of affordable and social housing in the village is a matter of some concern, but it's reliant on many factors, not least affordable land and the willingness to provide such housing by the authority. I'm on the licensing committee, sorry, which looks at any establishment which needs a licence for various reasons, and includes hearings for people or organisations which breach their licenses. The district councillor role involves liaising with the police and other authorities, and of course, very many residents' enquiries. I pride myself that I always respond to all my emails. I pride myself that I always respond to all my emails and please let me know if you think I haven't. Feedback is good and part of the councillor role. The local elections take place in May this year, if I stand and if I get elected, I will do the best of my work to the best of my ability to use my local knowledge to achieve best results. Please get in touch with me if I can help with anything. And that's all, thank you.
Good evening everyone, so I'm your district councillor for Cagworth, so I think a lot of what's been covered by Carol and also it does also say here it's a brief report, so I'm probably, yes, as long as, as long as ever, but first thank you to Donna for setting up such wonderful, it's great to see the community doing, obviously all the things really nice and look forward to looking at that later. Starting off on the big picture thing is what we've been doing at district council. Firstly, we've frozen council tax again, which means that when you're looking on the bill, you can see a section which is allocated to the district council and that's been frozen. Other things is we've been building new leisure facilities, particularly the new leisure centre in Colville. And finally, we're also looking to improve waste collection, so we've been trialling new waste trolleys, which can help with those blowing bags across the road and things like that. Also on the matter here locally about the U Lodge, I've been hoping to be open and available to all residents who have concerns and then I've been passing those on to the MP also to try and make sure voices are heard locally. Locally, what I've been up to is we've been dealing with the Realm project, so that's the marketplace regeneration of which £1 million project funding came from the left North West Leicestershire and the parish council. And it's been great to work locally with everyone on that project and now actually finally the parish have signed off on a solution which has gone to highways. The council has also been supporting the parish council to ensure HST Limited Consultants are, you know, speaking about any plans that affect the village. And there's also been quarterly liaison committee meetings with Segrow regarding the East Midlands Gateway to resolve any issues there with regards to HGVs and noise. And then finally, very locally, there's been some funding advice and support to various community groups, including the Community Library, One Cagworth, Cagworth Playing Group and Cagworth Youth Arts. An example is we've managed to secure a platinum Jubilee grant for One Cagworth and a warm home grant for the Baptist, the Baptist Church. I think going forward, as Carol said, you know, if I continue to be your district councillor after the elections, I look forward to supporting your village to convey concerns about the housing and multiple occupancy, which I know has been a factor locally, and then also continue to help create a better waste system and also continue to support everyone's own finances by keeping council taxes as low as possible. But like Carol said, you know, if anyone ever wants to contact me, I hope you have my email and it's been, it's been a pleasure representing you and thank you for inviting me tonight and meeting with you chair, so thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Sorry to keep moving from one to the other, but are you getting a change in the voice? Right, well, Inspector Wayne Nimblett, have I got it right?
Yes, you have.
Right, as kindly come today. I only got to know Wayne by emails recently, so it's good to meet him tonight. We always have a police report, an annual police report on these occasions. Also got PC James Martindale here as well, who's one of our valley teams, is that correct?
Yeah.
PCSO is Nicky, and I was going to get the names completely wrong, our PCSO is Nicky Russell. Russell and I won't get the other one because I met him the other day and what's his name?
Pat McDonald.
Pat McDonald, McDonald.
Yeah, McDonald.
McDonald, not here tonight. So thank you Wayne and we'll look forward to what you've got to say to us.
Okay, thank you. Because this is the first time that I've been here, right proper, I introduce myself properly. My name's Wayne Nimblett, I am the MPa commander for the whole of North West Leicestershire, so up to Cagworth, all the way down to Meesham, across to Ashby, Instock, Wicktig. So about 104,000 people living in my area. I've been a police officer for 22 years, of which I've been a sergeant for 14 years. During that time, I spent a wonderful six years of the proactive sergeant for the Forces Proactive Team. The stuff, the cool stuff that you see on telly, that's what I did for six years, bringing people that caused most harm to Leicestershire and basically locking them up. So driving cars fast, smashing doors in and making a real difference. Unfortunately, Mrs Nimblett told me to grow up and stop running around with the younger police officers and as a dutiful husband I did and I got myself promoted to inspector. I've been inspector for two years, I've been a OCI, which is basically in charge of all the police officers on a day-to-day basis. I spent nine months as Rob Nicholson, the chief constable's staff officer and then had the opportunity to become the MPa commander North West Leicestershire, which I started in September. That's flown by and I'm really enjoying sort of serving the community. Because of my background, very proactive, I like to try and solve problems if it would happen and if we do come across problems, I'm really keen on locking people up and bringing people to justice. Within sort of Cagworth, we have three priorities that we consult with community and there has raised already, I've said, car cruises and that's something that we've been looking at. One of the things that we've gone out and done is speak to West Midlands Police that have quite a lot and try to get the learning from them to try and improve our response to them. We've got in touch with our sort of road policing unit and to ensure that when they do occur, we're in the best, best position to try and intercept these people. They are organised, we try and get ahead of it by monitoring social media, but as a community, you need to feed into us when you're aware that they're happening and we can do something about it. Drugs remain a problem across the whole of North West Leicestershire and I have a very proactive neighbourhood proactive team that basically does the most amount of drug warrants within the whole of Leicestershire. We're constantly looking at county lines and that's a big issue sort of again across North West Leicestershire and across sort of the whole of Leicestershire to stop lines from Manchester, lines from Birmingham, London infiltrating our communities. I'm really keen on keeping on top of that. Again, comes back to sort of local information, any intelligence that you can give us, then please speak to sort of one of the team. There's a number of ways that you can do that through crime stoppers, but the more information that we have, the more that we can do to help the community stop these people from causing issues. The other issue we have is theft from motor vehicles. Unfortunately, because of the location and the easy routes in, we have a number of theft of motor vehicles and they do target catalytic converters and basically take things from underneath the car and unfortunately I've seen them in action in terms of taking these things off within 40 seconds. It's a very difficult crime to proactively prevent, but again, we are looking upstream and targeting the people that take these stolen items and try and make it something that people don't want to do. Looking at crime over sort of compared to last year, we, there was 18 crimes less this period than there was the previous year and I'm pleased to say that there was less burglaries in Cagworth sort of over last year. It is down by one, having been a victim of burglary in the past, I know how impacted that is and it's something that I'm really keen on stopping. So over the last year, there's been three burglaries within Cagworth. Theft on motor vehicles is up by one and that's gone up to 10 and theft of motor vehicles, again, is up, three motor vehicles stolen in the last year. I'm pleased to say that theft on stores and mainly around Co-op is down significantly and I know that the team have been working with the Co-op. The previous year there was 51 reports, this year there's been 29, so that's down. The only concerning thing for me is the number of assaults and public order, that's basically people being loud and aggressive. That's up from 43 to 51 in terms of assaults and public orders up from 14 to 38. That's something that I want the team to have a look at and whether that's related to pubs etc, that's something that we need to have a look at and see if we can do something to reduce that. In terms of overall, the policing style of the team are here to reassure you. We're here to bring people to justice and basically anything that you report to us will be robustly investigated. Obviously, I know what's been happening over the last few weeks in relation to U Lodge Hotel and I welcome anybody that is subject to any intimidation, any crimes to report that. I cannot investigate things if people don't tell us and that's really important to note. The other thing that I really, really need to impress on people is social media. It's really, really important that we take a sensible approach to social media and not to share things that we don't know is true. There's been a number of posts that I've been mainly aware of and some of them where we tried to fact check, unfortunately I've had no agreements come forward and nobody actually sort of confirmed things that have been said on social media as being true. So as adults and I've got three children and I tell them, don't believe everything you see on social media, fact check it and make sure that you don't repost anything that you go though is true. Okay?
Thank you, thank you very much. I think I'm going to add to that actually at the end on your researching and fact checking and back it up because I feel I've spent a lot of my life in the last four weeks doing, doing the same and if you just take one example where there was an incident reported, it seems ages ago now about the library. I spent ages then and since talking to individual people, including in the end a volunteer who has been very quick off the mark because of his connections at actually getting to know some of the asylum seekers and did, did have a group of four asylum seekers at the library and I've spoken to the library staff, I've spoken to the person who was with this group and that's what, that's what fact checking is about, that sort of, that sort of thing. So I want to back up what Wayne has said on that without going into any more detail than that. Sorry to comment on what you've said, but I think it's just appropriate leading because I'm sure people will have some questions. So we move on to the questions which we asked to be submitted in advance, didn't we? There's somebody who has to go soon and don't worry, I will raise your question if we have time. So I'm going to go through the questions as we've got them written down and if there is time, we might add on a few and that's, I think that's my discretion really, so it's been a good meeting so far, so you listened a lot, you deserve to say, but, and how do we go about answering these? It's not the parish council's duty to reply to them all, is it Donna? What's, what's the protocol?
It might be that if there's something that we can't answer ourselves, that we, we tell everybody where we're going to go for the answer and come back to them, my emails, I've got people's email addresses, there's some of the questions.
Right, okay. So is Geoff Wilson here? Oh, right, okay, well, well Geoff's, shall I use his question even though he's not here?
Yes.
The first question on my list then is, there are three redundant interactive speed signs on Ashby Road, which is now a no-through road. Could one of these be moved to the top of Watten Road where speeding is an issue? If not, what would an, would an alternative such as rumble strips or speed bumps be an option for Watten Road? I haven't prepared answers to these, I just thought I would see what the protocol was about answering it.
That particular question, we can't answer council, we would need to go, so the response would be, we would need to talk to Leicestershire Council.
Our county councillor might have been able to say something, but we can't.
Maybe, but we need to talk to the appropriate department.
It will be highways, I think. I mean, this issue has been raised before, I know Martin will remember it because it was raised at the parish council meeting by a different resident, I don't think it was Geoff Wilson. And the general feeling is that shifting these things costs an awful lot of money, as does installing them. And I think there's also a question about what the evidence is for speeding at the top end of Watten Road, that was my understanding. I think people have had, has the parish council been involved in speed gun use before training and they've got to be trained and properly done and then it's not official of course unless it's done by, by the more official people. But every time I, I know we shouldn't be anecdotal, last thing we should be, but every time I walk up Watten Road, I don't see these numbers of cars speeding down at the top end, but they do, they do. Well, you see, you see, anecdote is no good, fact is important. So I don't know where other we can go Donna with that one, other than you write to, to Leicestershire County Council highways for an official response and pass it on to Geoff Wilson.
We could ask if we could have a speed check or a speed watch, I don't know if there are such teams on, I can suggest it.
I think we'd hope that the new gateway sign on Watten Road and the dragon's teeth would actually have an impact as well. And that's my chance just to say how wonderful everybody thinks the new gateway signs are. That was Gerry Seng's design, I think quite some time ago and he allowed it to be used again. They're quite distinctive if you ever drive into other villages, that's anecdotal. Could you also ask them at the same time why white lining has been done up Ashby Road and many of the junctions there and randomly, but not, but not in the main parts of the village like the traffic light junction, which is very dangerous, which I reported in 2019. Says he'd be telling us from the chair.
So I did, do you remember I emailed with the, asking that question about other areas of the village and they asked us to identify any areas in the village where we think the white line is a particular wall, especially those that are at junctions or like those are safety issue. So if anybody does know something, maybe we might not have spotted, if you email me as the clerk, then I have to pass that question on, has you got to do the parish council on, have you got a answer?
We can't have an atta when we're in this meeting, what can we? And I mean, I was told, again, I was told by an employee which probably would never know that the whole village was being done, but now you're ringing news to me that it's only selective ones and I suggest that people do contact Donna straight away so that this can be compiled in the next few days if possible. Do you want to put a deadline on that?
But if by the end of the week then, people can't, if you know so.
White lining, end of week. Nathan Grange, are you here? Right, Nathan, your, your, your question, do you want to ask it or shall I read it?
Oh, you have to retag on that.
Okay, all right. I don't know if it's a stand or sit by the way, you'll see him jumping. Does the council consider the reaction from a considerable number of people in the village to the perceived change in role of the U Lodge to be proportionate? That's the reaction of people. Is the reaction proportionate? In other words, does the council, and this is addressed to the parish council, I'm not sure Donna will tell me whether this is the, that we have to reply. In other words, does the council think citizen-led protests in the village are actually helpful in achieving the goal of returning the hotel to a transit hub, which has been its typical usage for a considerable amount of time? I think that means just normal residential uses of transit hubs, I'm not too long familiar with transit hub. If they don't agree, and I suppose that means the parish council, what actions, if any, would they suggest? So should the parish council, in other words, me as chair of this meeting here, take this as a personal question to the parish council?
It can't be a formal response from the parish council because they haven't addressed it at the meeting and made a resolution, however, you could respond yourself.
The personal view?
Yeah, but it would be your personal view.
Well, I'll give other councillors a chance first who are present, I think we've got seven out of eight councillors here in the room. You don't have to, but I'll give other councillors the chance to say something first. Do you want me to read it again? It's the proportionality of the response of people in the village to the changed role, it's the value of citizen-led, what we think about citizen-led protests, whether they're helpful in returning it to its former use and if you don't agree, what actions would you suggest? Many councillors want to have a go, as a, your personal view?
I'll say something then, I'm Hilary Williams, I'm on the council and I think you're asking a million dollar question really, as to what is the right response to the current situation? I don't think the council has much power to change how things are done.
I understand that bit, which is it, is it the councillor's opinion that actually citizen-led protest is actually going to help this cause or not?
So again, that is something we need to all discuss then because we've all probably got different views on that at a meeting before we can answer it. Me personally, not sure, I feel like it's a done deal and I'm not sure protests will make a difference. I'm not saying... I'm not saying they shouldn't happen, but I just don't know how effective they're going to be, but that's me personally.
Thank you, Hilary. Is anybody, any other councillor wants to chip in?
Yeah, I will say, you know, we've written to the MP, we've written to the secretary, Secretary of State or the.
Immigration Minister, something like that.
Yeah. You know, we've asked council to look into it at North West and at LCC. I think we've gone down all the routes we could possibly go down to ask all the right questions. As a parish councillor, as Hilary says, we haven't got any power, we can't say to people, you can't protest, because obviously that's their kind of view and if they want to do it, as long as it is kept peaceful and it doesn't involve outside groups, but as we were saying on Facebook, it does involve outside groups and that's where the problem lies, I feel personally.
Any other councillor want to have a go? Well, my view again personally and picking up that point, I mean, I'm all for the right to protest, you know, and I think there's been a bill going through parliament that erodes that and I'm dead against it, but that's my personal view because I think the right to protest is very valuable. Whether protests are going to achieve anything, I mean, I've keep trying to get the people, the organisers to say what they expect the situation to be in three months' time, say, or six months' time. And it relates back to what Hillary said about done deals because the contract has been signed, it's a year's contract, we know that, I'm not giving any secrets away. So what is the aim of Save Kegworth? What does Save Kegworth mean? There's a banner on the fence of the bypass, what does it mean?
It's quite, am I allowed to speak or not? Am I allowed to speak?
I'll take a reply on that, yes. Can you remind us of your name, sorry?
Andy Douglas.
Right, okay.
So are you a resident of the village?
So Donna's asking if you're a resident of the village round the corner.
I'm in Skepsia, but from Skepsia, I mean, his son lives here.
Well, can I kindly say then that we wouldn't normally be expecting comment from any Kegworth parish on this occasion, but we'll let.